JR Lewis here and it is a joy to be bringing you the latest edition of the Town Meeting Program here on Tuesday, May the 16th. Brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, your local wireless data and cellphone provider which provides your local talk show. And a very interesting question we posed today. What if high-quality medical care from professionals could be something that is not just when you go into the doctor's office and then after you leave, you're kind of on your own? What if instead it could be essentially a continuous 24/7, always there for you kind of system? And not just be about what kind of pills you need for something, but actually focusing on your whole self beyond even just various conditions or diseases that you might have? Well, this is something that Iwanka Clinic has been working on with a group called Quantify Remote Care. And that's what we're going to be learning about today, actually directly from a nurse. Leanne Parker is our guest and she's going to tell us how Quantify got started, the need that they saw that inspired them to begin doing this, how they came to be involved in Cordova, some of the things that they've learned. And again, this ability that they offer to make your interactions with and your monitoring by healthcare professionals a continuous thing, not just once a year, twice a year, when you go get a physical, when you go to the doctor's office, but basically to have it with you all the time. It's a fascinating conversation. I really enjoyed chatting with her and I'm glad you get to hear the fruits of that conversation. Leanne Parker with Quantify Remote Care, our guest today on the Town Meeting Talk Show. Leanne, let's start by meeting you. Nice to know who we're talking to. What is your background in the providing of medical services and this organization, Quantify Remote Care?
Thanks, JR. My background is I'm actually a nurse. And I had started, I always like to joke and say I started on my grandma's med cart when I was two years old because she ran a rural hospital in West Virginia. My aunt, uncle, and mom, all nurses. So I've grown up around it my entire life. Started out as a nurse's aide and worked in a nursing home and home health, went into the hospital where the rest of my family was working. And I got my LP in there and then moved on and ended up from skilled care, which is like rehab up into acute care, med surg. And then I went into national healthcare for about a decade. And I was trained one-on-one by some amazing physicians that taught me specialty areas. And these were doctors that were at Harvard and Hopkins. And you know, I became a subject matter expert and a good bit of things like medical oncology and just oncology, whole imaging, cardiology. And then I myself was on chemo at that time. So you know, if you start the picture of that, I was a nurse and then I was in national healthcare and building things and I couldn't even afford the treatments I needed that I was actually writing protocols for and being very sick myself. So there I was a patient. And then I determined that I wanted to try to go help a rural hospital because I thought that, you know, there was no reason why we couldn't provide healthcare and good healthcare in rural areas. So in Tennessee, I went to run a hospital. Unfortunately, the owner was not so wonderful. But we did start to turn it around and I learned a lot in that experience. And from that, I worked on this and built what we have, is what we call Quantify Remote Care, which we just, it was a group of nurses. We all came together and we created what's called Enhanced Care Management. Because a lot of folks, I think, confuse telehealth and, you know, tele-visits and things and stigmas with remote patient monitoring. Like, we actually do stuff that's much deeper than that than I'm sure you're going to be asking me about. So that's just the quick overview of my background.
Yeah, okay. Well, and it is fascinating with the increased connectivity that we have and the realization, like we said, this is not telehealth per se, it's more than that. But the idea that, I mean, because I've experienced that with some of my providers, the fact that you don't necessarily, depending on your situation, have to go in to have a conversation if that's what it is, is a conversation. They don't have to feel anything or, because I'm diabetic, which everybody that listens to this show knows. And you know, sometimes the visit is just words. There isn't anything to probe or measure or any of that sort of stuff. So, and you guys have taken, it sounds like, this to a higher level. So what is Quantify Remote Care then? Is it a company? Is it a nonprofit? And what does it do?
So it is a company and we are in the lower 48 is where we started in the most rural areas. And we started working with clinics and providers in those areas. And the sickest, honestly, the population was probably the sickest based off all the data that's like CMS, like where Medicare is. Those were the areas of patients that have chronic lung disease like COPD, diabetes, hypertension. Their live, their expected lifespan was much less than like suburban areas. And a lot of these things, when COVID happened, people, they flocked to do remote monitoring, but more in like the cities and the urban areas. Nobody ever really, really, really honed in on the rural areas. And so that's where we focused as a company. So as a company, I really, you know, like to say that we focused on those that weren't getting the care needed and where everybody said you couldn't innovate. You know, that you couldn't come to Alaska and be able to change something. Like, everybody acted like it was so hard. But honestly, like our company takes a very pragmatic and empathetic approach to healthcare. And that's what, that's what we're built off, that's our foundation. And so as a company, we do some amazing things.
All right, well, let's get into the weeds on that a little bit. First off, are you, I forgot to ask when we started, are you in Alaska or are you outside?
We, well, I'm actually from Ohio. I'm in Alaska right now. I'm in Cordova right now.
Oh, there we go.
We started, in any state that we go and we have an office, right? Even we have to have an office. And so we have an office in Anchorage, but really everything's virtual. You know, my nurses are everywhere, my staff's everywhere. But we were based and built out of Tennessee and Ohio. And we came in, Cordova was our first city we came into in Alaska.
All right, and working with the Iwanka Community Health Center, it looks like?
Yes, yes.
Good, okay. Well, okay, so as far as getting into the specifics, you differentiated, say, between what people may think about remote care, telehealth, and you know, that your model is very different. So what do you do for a patient in Alaska to either add to what they're getting from their doctor or be able to provide over and above for that? You know, what is, what is it like being a patient who works with Quantify?
Okay, so you know, we work with their doctors. So we work with an extension of their doctors. But it's a needed extension because we fill a huge gap. Because when you go into the office, you're typically only getting a few moments, you know, in front of your physician or your doctor. And they only know what's in front of them that time, which is traditional healthcare. You know, everybody works that way. What we have done is we have, after much, you know, learning and education, we use devices like blood pressure cuffs that have cellular cards in them that, you know, you take your blood pressure and it goes through the cellular towers, the cell, like cellphone towers, and goes right into your chart. And so we, you know, all of our devices are that way. They have a cellular card within them. So there's like no Bluetooth or trying to connect or keep connected. And so, and a lot of ours are all AT&amp;T, which is obviously a good provider here within Alaska. And so the differentiator with that is, so when the doctor first says, you know, you know what, JR, I'm going to put you on the program because, you know, you're diabetic and you may need these couple of things. And so either we would order you what's called a continuous glucose monitor, where we would continually get your blood sugars. Or say you have hypertension or blood pressure issues or oxygen, we would give you a blood pressure cuff or, you know, an oxygen reader, pulse ox for your finger. And we would, we set, we ask you, you know, for blood pressure example, please take it three times a day, just for the first three days, JR, so we can get your, of you, we want to understand you. And so we get those readings in and we know more because when we do it like an admission call, we understand, we ask you questions like maybe what time you get up and go to bed, what time you normally take your medicines. And what we start to see is your personalized trends. And everybody takes their medicines typically at the same time. The doctor says once a day, twice a day, and everybody's taking them all at one time, you know, in the morning, all at one time in the evening. And we started really looking close at that and found that if you looked at how the medications work, you look at how, like the half-life, the duration of them, we can really personalize it to the patient and say, take this one at 8:00 PM and this one at noon. And we've seen a lot of people stabilize. And that's an example for blood pressure. For diabetes as well, we have really monitored that. And if you come on as a patient, and we would really work closely with you. And we look at foundational things in education, like really diabetic education with our dietitians, our nurses, and we're taking all that data in, right? That's from your machine, your diabetes machine, our glucometer. And what we do with that, you know, is we really monitor it close. And we have parameters set, so we understand your norms. So if you go outside of those norms, we get what we call high alerts. If your blood, like your blood sugar's too high, your blood sugar's too low, or your blood pressure's too high or low, outside of your normal range, then we know immediately to reach out to you. And I think the thing that's unique is that that part right there, because nobody really knows that this happens so much. And we've had patients that in the evenings, our blood sugars were actually, which you might know is like, I mean, they were dropping in the 40s because they were higher in the morning and they were giving all these meds. And nobody really knew that's what was happening in these patients in the evening. But, you know, we know that stuff. And so you get all this data and analysis, the things that, and nurses watching you. Basically, you have a nurse at your fingertips. The uniqueness of that, we message and communicate with you right away. You have a nurse at your fingertips. If you text, they can text you through the app. If you message, they message you through the app. If you have a flip phone and you don't text their message, we'll give you a call. You know, and say, hey, you know, JR, I saw that your blood sugar's low. You know, have you taken your medicine? Did you, you know, eat some peanut butter, milk, whatever? And we can intervene faster to prevent an adverse event, maybe a lifeflight off the island or having to go into the hospital. So that's part of that. It's a little bit deeper than that, but we have, you know, integrated care teams that take care of all the patients and it's pretty, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah, okay. So what are, what are some of the most common conditions? You mentioned diabetes, the high blood pressure. Are there, is it predominantly chronic conditions that you guys would interact with somebody about?
No, even acute, like even things that are just new or just, you know, maybe they're temporary. Say like gestational, which, you know, somebody, a pregnancy that has high, you know, blood pressure or diabetes or swelling or they just aren't feeling well. Like, there's a, there's a piece called like, it's called principal care management or transitional care management, where even if they just have one thing, but it's something that's really impeding their life, like we really engage at that level too, on even a single thing, anything. And anything that we can help, like get them healthier with, it doesn't matter. It doesn't have to be fully, fully chronic. Like, it can be a new situation that may not be lifelong.
Wow, okay. And you talked about how you work with the doctor. So it sounds like in many ways that you just, you expand on what the, you know, what the doctor diagnoses and so forth. And then do you share this data with the doctors as well?
Oh, yeah. And they actually, the doctors even like going into our, we use this platform called Carriam. That's like our chart, right? And we could communicate back and forth. That's where all the vital signs go in. The doctors love it too because they can go in there and message the patients as well, which is really neat because they go in and they review that too or, you know, the information and they message the patients that they need to thank if they message, you know. We mark if they text or not. And then also, we create reports in synopsis, I say, like, if something's abnormal going on and we catch that trend, we give them the trends. If it's heart rate and blood pressure or whatever might be off, and we provide that information to the doctor, should we give them more tools? You know, extensively more tools so they can handle the patient and actually have a better view of what's going on with them. So we all work together. It's really an extension, but we're 24/7 too. So we're always there. So after the clinic closes at five or six and say, it's seven o'clock, something happens or you have a question or you're concerned, you can message the nurse and they'll message you back. And it's not, it's not a robot or AI or anything. You're really talking to a nurse.
Okay, and so as far as kind of the intake process then, you know, let's say, well, let me use me for an example. Like I said, I've been very open about being diabetic. So maybe I'm not happy with, you know, how my blood sugar levels have been, how my A1C tests have been. That's, for those who don't know, is the test, the blood test diabetics get that goes back over three months and provides you kind of an average of what your blood sugar has been. And so I'm not happy maybe with my combination of meds or something like that. And I'm interested in being able to participate in this. What do I do? How do I initiate the process of being able to get involved with you guys?
So for right now, we've started in Cordova. I think we're going to expand out and try to meet more clinics, especially the rural clinics. So JR, if you were still in Cordova for right now, like you could tell Iwanka, like you would, you know, I would like to join the, your Enhanced Care Management Program. And they actually even just have a join code. Like, it's, they can download Carriam, the app, if they have a smartphone and if they're tech savvy, and just put the join code in there, which is actually EYAK, and we get an alert that they joined. And then we let the doctor know that the patient wants to join and we could do it that way. Or the doctor, you know, go in the office and they do the referral right to us. You know, you're seen and said, hey, I want, I want, I want more care. You know, I want something additional. They'll do it that way. But we also, they could call in too. We have patients call in because of word of mouth, right? They've seen other people get, start to get better and they ask what happened. And they call our main line and can come in to us that way as well. And I really want to, you know, we've done very well here, I think, in Cordova with the patients we've had. I mean, it's been very humbling. And really, we want to start moving out into other villages and work with other clinics too. But truly, Cordova was like the proof of concept that we can do this. And it's been such a, it's a success. We've done very well.
How did the relationship with Iwanka come about? By the way, did you reach out to them or them to you? Or did you guys meet at a conference or that's, I mean, unless that's privileged in some fashion?
No, it's not privileged. It's interesting. So a dear friend, I work with, my background is in, you know, obviously, I worked in a lot of healthcare policy and building nationally. And I very, you know, another, it's not a very exciting thing, but I'm very good at medical billing too. And I actually have a lot of, in helping new, new innovative technologies coming to the US. I have a lot of places from Germany to Sweden that reach out to me because of referrals of other folks I've helped that, you know, something's really good for healthcare and especially I like point-of-care devices that are going to help rural health. They come to me and I meet a lot of folks that way. So interesting enough, I met a fellow that has been, worked a lot in Alaska. And he knew the administrator here at Iwanka. And they talked and he told them about us. And they, they knew right away that they were working on a grant for HERSA for hypertension. And so they thought we would be a really good fit for that. And so he introduced us and I came here and we just expanded upon that a hundredfold outside of that grant to really drive change and help create a healthier population here. So we just met, you know, organically through connection. It's pretty interesting.
Yeah, networking. All right, so let's get into then, you know, you said that the company started, the concept evolved in the lower 48 and then moved to Alaska. It's amazing how many people I've interviewed recently from innovative street lighting to dealing with COVID, who are like, you know, we want to start this in Cordova because of various qualities of Cordova, whatever they are. I like that. But what are you, you know, now that you're moving into Alaska, how is this, what are you seeing, I guess, in Alaskan patients? Maybe compared to what you've been doing in the lower 48?
You know, I mean, to be honest, like every, I really, my team and I both, like our full team, we do a lot of research to understand the demographics, the culture, the needs. Basically full assessments, I like to call like a forensic review. And, you know, I find that every, every rural area we've gone in has its own unique, own unique needs that I think when others come in and they try to solve things, they don't take a pragmatic approach to it. And with Cordova and Alaska in general, the one thing I have found that I had not, I had not, I have not seen basically in the lower 48 is that there's a much higher population of younger, very severe diabetics, honestly with HDA1Cs of 11 to 13, which is, you know, high, JR. You want to get, you know, if you're diabetic, you want to try to get under seven as much as you can. And pre-diabetes is around 5.5 to 5.6. So these are extensively high. Additionally, they already have diabetic symptoms like can't see very well, like diabetic retinopathy. But these are people and folks in their 30s and hypertension's very bad, heart disease, cancer, depression, so alcoholism. So we deal with all of that, you know, mental health, substance abuse, all these issues. I've noticed they are at a higher rate in a younger population than the lower 48, which drove us further to want to do more, you know, and intervene rapidly so that, you know, some of the long-term effects that can be very life-changing don't occur. You know, that's been, been a big drive. That's what I've seen is different.
How then, given that very unfortunate set of statistics, how are you jumping in to try and reverse some of that?
Oh, okay. So we have a great story and somebody that referred us, you know, put you and I together, right? Networking, that, you know, addressing that, I think the most important thing to know is like, healthcare's not just healthcare. It's not, it's not your vital signs and it's not the medication. It's, it's really looking at the whole situation. And so within the first, I think it's 60 days, we spend about six hours on what's called, you know, social determinants of health. Like, you know, do you have enough food? Do you have the right kind of food? Do you, you need help paying utilities? Do you need help, you know, with weatherization of your home or, you know, what you might, whatever you might need.
Oh, so life circumstances that may be contributing to stress, which can contribute to bad physical health? Okay, I got you.
And costs, right? Because right now in Cordova, the cost of food, I was hearing a couple, two months ago, I think the cost of food's gone up at least 20% if not more since that time. So the cost of healthy food and foods, right? That's a huge barrier. So foods, medicine, right? That's a foundational thing. And if you can't afford that, that's a big barrier in your health. And so anything that we can find, community resource-wise, you know, whatever we can put together, we will do whatever it takes to try to help that aspect. And then we also get really deep into like the educational piece and just having a nurse there and we kind of guide you through all very, you really get to know your nurses, I will say that. And like, the education's like much different. Like, you might not understand what those numbers need, your HDA1C means or what these blood pressure numbers mean. And we watch you so closely and we educate you on them and what you want them to be at and why you want them to be there and when to take your medicine and when to actually hold your medicine because your blood pressure might get too low or, you know, when we need to intervene. Additionally, we also get really heavy into preventative care and making sure all the things are done that, that you need, like, you know, to prevent really, you know, adverse things. Diabetes, you get your eye exams, your feet, your foot exam, et cetera. Like, there's a lot of things that we do that to me is just second nature. I guess it's hard to explain, but to really ensure that we drive a change in that situation. And for instance, the person that referred us to you to discuss this, you know, his HDA1C was 11 and he's down to 5.5 now. He's lost 35 pounds and his blood pressure was very high, very out of control. We could never stabilize it. He's been 120s over 60s and 70s now for a while.
Great.
So it's pretty amazing to see the change.
Yeah, well, and the, so you mentioned that one, that particular success story. I've got to think, you know, the fact that you're developing a presence in Cordova and that particularly that Iwanka is interesting, interested in working with you must mean that there are other successes. So how is that going?
Yeah, the other, yes, yes, there are actually. And things I didn't even realize, like one fellow told me yesterday that we made him, nobody could ever figure out his blood pressure. You know, it was always very high. And obviously, he might have had what they call white coat syndrome. When you go in, you get very nervous, your blood pressure's through the roof, you know, in front of the doctor. But also, it may have been like that, but then we started catching trends on him. And we realized when he was out, you know, hunting or trapping or whatever, you know, if he slightly, he became slightly dehydrated, that his blood pressure would skyrocket. So we were able to like intervene there. We got him, really, he's doing phenomenal now to the point that he holds his blood pressure meds most days because he's, we figured out how to teach him to understand his body better. And that has been a world of difference for that person, you know. And I, outside of the physiological stuff, other success stories would be severely depressed people that had nobody to talk to and they felt that, you know, they didn't want everybody in town maybe to know or maybe somebody they see all the time to know things that they really could open up and talk to an outside person that they trusted that was private.
Right.
That's made a big difference, I think, in mental health. There's a lot of stories and successes and folks that may have been quiet and not saying that much, that a lot of stuff's come out and they just feel open and they have somebody that, you know, they could discuss things with and bounce things off of and questions. So, you know, they feel very, very comforted and we've helped a lot of folks. We've helped a lot of folks get insurance that didn't have insurance, you know. And we're told they couldn't have insurance, like Medicaid or Medicare. And we really helped that a lot to get them the help that they needed. That was a big deal. So yeah, we have a lot, a lot of success stories.
Yeah, and I mean, you hit on a point that I experienced with the sound alternatives that we always had, but I say we because I was on that board for, I don't know, three or five years or something. And it, you know, one of the hardest things is you knew that there were people out in the community that you could help, but the concern they had about somebody recognizing their car when they drove up and they parked in the parking lot and if somebody saw them go in. And I mean, we tried to, we added privacy glass and did a bunch of things while I was there. I don't know what they've done since, but, I mean, we've been working on, they were, they were working on that for a long time. And it's just hard in a town this size when even driving to a facility maybe worries you that you are opening yourself up to scrutiny from fellow community members. This ability to get to know somebody who is, you know, where you can literally do that completely privately, that, that does seem like it has a lot of potential.
And actually, the BH part of it, behavioral health, is seriously, it's blocked and not everybody can read that. It's on lockdown. So like your, your physical part, right? Your, your readings, your blood pressures, example, sugars, everybody can see, but behavioral health notes and aspects are completely in lockdown basically. So only the behavioral health provider that works with us, all virtual to here, and admin, an admin person like myself could view, that was it.
Right.
And so it really is private. And I think the most important piece of that is that if you really look up the statistics, like the suicide rate, Alaska was per capita like the highest in the country. Depression, substance abuse, like alcoholism, et cetera. Like, there's a lot. And I feel like you have to, not everybody fits inside a box, a standardized box for medicine or healthcare. Like, we have to really personalize it truly and not just say it as a, you know, buzzword. Like, you really need to personalize it to, you have to meet the person where they're at. And so I think we know more because we're really in their home with them, but not, you know, but virtually, we're with the person. And they have us all the time. I think that's a big difference.
Yeah, well, and I mean, because you're not limited to 15 minutes in the doctor's office, you can dig a little bit deeper too and find out. I mean, we've seen all of these things that have exploded over the last few years, you know, with stressors created by race, by gender fluidity, by substance abuse, the isolation created by the pandemic, you know. And the different people are going to have different facets of all of those different things that comprise who they are. And since you guys have more time, you know, the more continuous monitoring to be able to develop a better profile, yeah, I mean, I can certainly see why there would be a great success there. And I'm glad you've got, you know, apparently a pretty healthy list of successes. You know, you mentioned, you mentioned the big one, which is insurance. Now, people may be thinking, well, this all sounds great. I'd love to be able to, but I don't have insurance or I don't know if my insurance covers it. Or how does all of that, how does, how does the financial aspect of it work out?
So obviously, it depends, right? So if you have Medicare part B, we'll say B, that's your outpatient, your normal, like your clinic, you know. There is, it's all covered, all insurances cover this because we usually, it's remote, they use different codes, like remote physiological monitoring, patient monitoring, chronic care management, and then obviously dietitian and behavioral health. So those all get built under typical regular insurance codes, right? So Medicare, Medicaid, commercial, all cover that. So what we do though, when we first admit somebody, when we talked about that SDOH part, the social determinants of health, we get an idea of their income too because a lot of times we're finding that folks have Medicare and they may just have Medicare part A because it's free and they don't have part B that actually covers doctors' visits and certain things. They, they don't have the part B part because it has a copay or a premium per month. But we find that they actually meet for what's called a qualified Medicare beneficiary, which is a secondary insurance called through Medicaid, but it's funded by the government, Medicare, that pays all their copays, premiums, and deductibles. So, you know, we get them into that, that program. Or there's a special needs one that will just cover the premium. There's, there's different levels. So we look really heavy at that part of the financial aspect. If it's a commercial member, say that you have, like the state has Blue Cross, right? For as a commercial payer, they have a copay and that can vary. I mean, it can't, it can't be like $20 a month or 25, but I did write a proposal. Um, but I did write a proposal to Blue Cross, um, out of the experience here in Cordova. And I, I have asked, um, if they could assist us, uh, with these populations and see if they could make care management, mental health, um, as preventative services where they wouldn't have a copay. And I'm really anxious to get that response back because I think that, that would be a big deal. Because I think having a copay may hinder care. People may not want that. The other one, Medicaid, you don't have any copay, right? There's that, they pay a hundred percent. The, the, if you're a self-pay and you're not a tribal beneficiary, we've been working on that and there's policies being created based off income, et cetera, of how, uh, we can offer that care. And additionally, we were just looking at some grants, um, to get that offered for folks that don't have insurance. But we really do try to drive and figure out ways to get them coverage, anybody that we can help. Um, and then obviously if you're a tribal beneficiary, um, it's covered through, if you don't have any other type of insurance, which we still try to help you and get you another type of insurance of any way, um, that it's going through the tribe. So, um, there's multiple ways to do it, but I never want, I never want the inability to pay or the inability, um, to have coverage for that, like to stop anybody from getting healthy. So we're trying to work through multiple ways. I even met with like fishermen's, um, uh, organizations and such to see, because there's a lot of fishermen that don't have health insurance, like what can we do to help them, to get them healthier? So we're trying to work with multiple organizations, grants, et cetera, to try to, to cut out that whole barrier, um, to receiving this type of service.
Yeah. Well, and you know, as, as most of them being small businesses under themselves, and we found this with, uh, you know, with the radio stations being a very small business too. It's, sometimes micro businesses are so far under the radar of what the people who design these plans at the federal level, there's always going to be some people on the fringes that they can't count for. So.
Right. And I don't want them out there. So we want to figure something out and we will, we're working every which way we can.
So you're, so yeah, then it's not like, uh, because, because a lot of times, you know, people are probably used to going into a doctor's office, you know, and sort of a worst case scenario. And I doubt this has happened as much. I mean, I certainly never experienced getting, getting it, getting care in Cordova. But whether you see it on TV or you hear stories in the news, people go in and they say, well, you need this, this, this and this. And, uh, you think, well, how am I going to pay for it? Or I don't have insurance or whatever. And somebody, you know, in, in the, there's this risk of somebody saying, well, you, you'll have to figure that out because that's not what we do here. We're, we're the medical, we're the medical facility and you need to go, you know?
I think Alonka does a great job of that.
Oh, yeah, no, I, that's, that's, yeah, them, it's a whole different deal with them. But, you know, I think, you know, you think about larger hospitals in, in bigger communities or something, but, you know.
They give you a paper, JR. They'll give you a paper. They'll say, here's a list of places, try all this. And a lot of people can't navigate that stuff. It gets very overwhelming. That's why we're here.
So you'll really get down in the weeds with them then. You'll, you'll really see, you'll really dig in there and try to figure out how to make it work. That's great.
Whatever we can do. I'm pretty stubborn. Yeah. Try to figure out any way I can.
Well, it's, it's a fascinating idea, you know, and, and I can, uh, personally, the, the idea of continuous monitoring, um, which is a term I was introduced to as a diabetic when I started using something that you mentioned, continuous glucose monitors, basically a little thing that we, we stick in the arm. And it, it's, it's almost like a microcosmic or like a metaphor, what you're talking about for the whole system. You know, when, when a diabetic does a little blood test, it tells you where your blood is at that moment. It doesn't tell you where you've been or where you're headed. Continuous glucose monitoring, this little, this little widget in my arm, not only shows my, me where I am at now, but where I have been over the last eight hours and where I am currently trending. And that data, having that data completely changes how you're able to view your condition. And I assume it would be the same with, with blood pressure, any of the others. And that, you know, so in a way, that's like, like I said, that's almost a model for, you, you can take that concept, it sounds like, and, and, and apply that to a person's care sort of overall. The doctor's visit is very important, but it's a moment in time. Whereas you can then take this, this continuous monitoring and, and stretch it to all kinds of things for the financial aspect and the, the pharmaceutical and the mental health and all of that stuff and sort of apply that to the whole thing. That's really fascinating.
And the thing that's different a little bit probably JR than what you have, like with your, so if you're educated and you understand, right? Because a big thing's health literacy. You understand how to read your CGM data. Um, the thing that's a little bit different is like, I know a lot of physicians and clinics that may order those, but nobody ever really looks at that data, no, looks at them. Now, the patients have access. So that's where I think we're a little different because you have the nurses always looking at it and have the alert set to if they're in a dangerous level, like if you're too low or too high or trending that way, we get that alert and we can intervene to where other times you might be in a silo and silence because only you may know that data and do you understand it. And so I think that's like one of the big distinguishes between like just having a glucometer, you know, continuous glucometer on your arm and versus what you have with us.
Sure, sure. No, and, and, uh, and, and that support structure and somebody to encourage you and say, you know, I assume in many cases, hey, we can figure this out. We'll find a way to do it. Um, and, and to get that, that individualized support. Something before we kind of wrap it up here, you, you said something interesting earlier when you were talking about getting into Alaska and that, that some of our sick people seem to be on, on the younger side. Does anybody, uh, have a sense of why that would be, that we have so many younger sick people?
I think I honestly, I, I have some ideas. So I always believe that foundational, you know, illness, especially illness that young, there's always foundational causes, right? So I, I typically find that we use medications to treat symptoms of a foundational cause. And so, you know, we do, we take a lot of medicine for symptoms of something. And honestly, even when I'm up here, I don't get a lot of fresh, obviously, fresh vegetables, a lot of fresh foods, uh, fruits, basically. And, uh, you guys don't have a lot of variations in meat. Obviously, there's a lot of fish and shrimp and, you know, crab, which are phenomenal. Um, but a lot of folks don't realize like shrimp's very high in cholesterol, has very low fat, but very high in cholesterol. Like there, you know, there's a lot of, uh, great things with omega, you know, threes when it comes to like fish. But you guys don't have a, like a mix like the lower forty-eight with chicken and pork and, you know, leaner meat like that to kind of like, just like stabilize it all out. Plus, I don't know, you know, a lot of the things I'm going to say, the more sustainable or like shelf divide, you know, self-processed foods are, they last longer, you know, they're, they're there and available. And I also think that not only is it the access to healthy food, but I think the understanding of the impact of what you do. I think health literacy and education maybe in that part is not so, you know, high. And maybe people understanding the implications of, of where they are, we're heading, basically. Um, you know, as you know, as a diabetic, if you let that stuff stay that long, it's going to start affecting your kidneys, your heart and your limbs. You can end up losing feet. I mean, and your kidneys end up on dialysis. And I don't know that anybody has those blunt, they probably do. But, you know, I find that I, I have, having those strong conversations really eye opens a lot of folks and they can change a little bit because you guys can eat healthier up here and do things. But that's one thing I, I have noticed. And there's still people that do eat healthy, but still have that issue and, um, different issues as they're younger. So a lot of it can be just, uh, uh, everybody's really super busy up here though. Everybody's always working. But just lifestyle, maybe genetics and, you know, you guys don't have a lot of sun all the time. Vitamin D's low up here. Like, there's different factors, I think. It's just different.
Well, that's, that'd be a really interesting thing to, to keep an eye on because it certainly isn't something that you want to see become more pervasive. I mean, we've, we've heard stories for quite a while about younger people, uh, there, there being increasing numbers of, of obesity, uh, in younger and younger people, which of course is, is a difficult, uh, uh, way to start out and, and sets you kind of behind the curve. But, um, yeah, that's, that's just, that's, that's really, that's really unfortunate. But on, on, you know, on the flip side, uh, younger people are more tech savvy and more interested in saying, yeah, I'll use a phone. Yeah, I'll text. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get alerts for things. And, and so this could be a thing, I mean, really with the, with the integration with, with people's devices that, uh, could turn that around just be, it, not just because it's, it's technology, but, but that could help get them more interested in it because it integrates better into their, their sort of virtual world.
It does. And, and if it doesn't, they're like, I don't think people realize they are, how many people still have flip phones? I, I realized that when I went into the, the deepest parts of Mississippi, a lot of folks didn't have smartphones.
Yeah.
And, or they didn't have good cell service. So we've been at this for a few years now, like over three years. And I ended up, we, like I said, you meet the person where they're at, you meet the patient where they're at and you treat them like a person. But we were getting cell boosters, like they're not very expensive, a cellular booster. We'd have somebody, we'd pay somebody to put it on their house for them. Um, so their devices would come through because they don't, the thing that I loved about the, the cellular devices, like, like the blood pressure cuff example with the SIM card, is they don't have to have a smartphone. So if they have a flip phone, they're scared of tech, they don't like tech. We have, we have, we have set up ways to meet them where they're at, you know? Some patients like called once a week and they have a set time, they speak to their nurse and they do all their readings all the time, but, and we still get their readings, right? And we just get, if they're in that normal level, that's great. But if they start to, to be outside of their normal level, we can immediately still intervene. They don't have to have that smartphone. So we try to really meet everybody where they're at, in whatever situation. So tech savvy is great. And if you're not, then we'll figure it out. We get it. It's, it's quite simple.
Sure. Do you find, have, have you encountered, uh, an inordinate number of people who express privacy concerns over transmitting this data? Or have you been able to, to explain that away as something they don't really need to worry about?
I promise, I, I promise them as a joke, I will not sell their blood pressure on the internet. Like I, like we can't, like I, I, I don't want them to feel that way because everything's still required. It's all, it's still encrypted and, um, PHI, you know, personal health information. So this can't be shared, you know? And, and that's why I said, like, we basically have all the mental health notes and stuff. You know, basically, I'm going to say sequestered and hidden behind a wall, that people can't see that. So a lot of concerns and that's something that was different. I never had anybody read the whole like terms and conditions of the app, you know, about sharing your data, your health, you know, your, your vital signs, basically. Um, and folks up here did read that. And so, um, I, I just always promised that because it's still covered under like the regulation, like you can't, we can't go shouting from treetops or, you know, selling their information or anything. And we wouldn't do that anyway. But, um, you know, everything's protected. Yeah. But there was privacy issues in that too. They were concerned, they didn't understand, you know, is it going to be out on a website somewhere that everybody can read? Absolutely not. It's all secure.
And I, I, you know, it, it, as we know very well, um, in native culture, the holistic approach has, has been, uh, a, a part of culture for many, many thousands of years. I would assume that this symbiosis with the native village of IAC has worked pretty well, that you guys are on the same page with, with, with those ideas?
I am more, yes. I am, I obviously, you know, traditional like Western medicine, I understand, you know, we do need it. We need it in very specific things. But again, holistic medicine again is treating a foundational cause and an understanding, like, right? Like having your native foods, et cetera. Um, like it's, it's, that approach is, I, I would, I prefer to go that route too, right? Like, that's an important part of everything, um, that I feel is healthcare. And it's treating the whole person and not just treating one aspect of them. So like, I'm not just treating your diabetes. I'm not just treating your congestive heart failure or your kidney disease. Like, we're treating the whole person and, and that aligns with whatever they, you know, they request and want. And I think holistic medicine's wonderful. And I know a lot of folks, I agree with it, like to be here, especially in foundational, you know, treatment.
Well, on that broader view of what might be causing things that, you know, in a doctor's office, there's only time to look at it from a medical perspective, but, you know, that it may be, um, that there may be psychological components that are causing physical maladies and, and to, to really, uh, to broaden that look. That's, that, that, I'm, I'm glad that, that medicine has continued to, seemingly at least with my peripheral view, has continued to move in that direction. So that's, that's great. Let's put a bow on it here. What do you, what do you want to leave us with? And how can people that want more information get it?
Well, um, I, I really want to, to reach more folks and get, get folks to understand like what we do and how we do things. And if they are interested, so, you know, if you're in the Cordova area or part of like, um, or come into here, like I know the fishermen come in at different times of year, but, um, they could, they could easily call us, um, to, to, to come on or to the clinic. And our number would be the nine oh seven four one six three five three six. And that's to our, direct to my nurses and us is Quantify Remote Care. Um, that's one way, um, to message with us. Or if you want to, um, our website's quantifiremocare.com. Um, or they could, they could email if they want to email, info@quantifieremocare.com. Um, but additionally, if there's any, anybody else like outside of Cordova or providers or clinics or anybody they know that they, you know, it would be good for their community or anything, like I, we are, we are ready and willing to go out and, and go anywhere we need to go to help folks. And I, you know, it's just a drive and a purpose and, and we're really excited to do that. And we don't, and the other thing is you don't even, we come into a clinic and we don't have any upfront cost or anything like that. So like we, you know, we understand like, you know, what we need to do, et cetera. So we, we put all the devices and we get all the patients set up and we do everything. And until insurance pays or whatever, we don't do anything, you know, collect money. It doesn't cost to start the program, you know, for clinics and providers.
Okay. So locally then, the, the, the base of operation for connecting to you would be the Alonka Community Health Clinic?
Yes, yes.
So people, if they, if they've already got a relationship established there, they can work that if they're, uh, and, and then again, if they want to do some more research or look at other options or ways to connect, then those things that you mentioned, which for the, uh, for those of you listening online, um, to the, uh, on-demand on, on the YouTube channel, we'll have all that contact information in the description for this. So, um, Leanne, I, it's a fascinating conversation. It, it's, it's nice to be able to, to talk about healthcare, the, the process of getting healthcare and, and, you know, having it be successful from a hopeful standpoint. Because so much of the press about it is like, oh no, it's broken and, and people are fighting and now it's being politicized. So, um, so this, this was very inspiring. I, I hope people, uh, will consider. Again, I'm a big advocate. I haven't worked with you guys, but I'm a big, I have become a huge advocate of the continuous monitoring model in my own care. Uh, uh, it, it just, like I say, it completely changed how I approached managing diabetes. And, uh, to think that that could be, that, that model could be expanded to your care overall, um, is, is, is really intriguing and the, and the inclusion of the technology. And, uh, I just find all of that fascinating. So I hope folks will get involved and I really appreciate you being with us.
I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
That's Leanne Parker on today's town meeting, telling us about Quantify Remote Care, which has been working with the Alonka Community Health Center, I think for about six months now, actually, trying to get this system up and running for Cordovans. You know, some interesting stats that we didn't really get a chance to talk about, that patients working with Quantify have been able to see. Average care delivery time per patient per month, ninety-three minutes, time that they spend with people that are part of their system. The percentage of their patients that see at least twenty to sixty minutes of direct interaction is ninety-five percent. Ninety percent of the people who get involved in the program stay with it. They've reduced hospitalizations in their folks by eighty-six percent. Those of us who are diabetic, who are familiar with the HBA one C test, because of that continuous monitoring, they've been able to get the HBA one C down three point one, which is a very sizable difference. Average reduction in systolic blood pressure, ten clicks. Average reduction in diastolic blood pressure, five clicks. So those are pretty good numbers. Might be worth looking into. Again, you can communicate with the Alonka Community Health Center or use that contact information that Leanne shared with us. Also, if you are listening to the online version of this in the archive at the Cordova TV YouTube channel, check in the description for links and contact information that Leanne provided. And hello to those of you, by the way, who are using Cordova TV to either re-listen to this program or maybe it was recommended to you by somebody and you decided to check it out. Whether you hear this on the air or on YouTube, we're just glad that you have an opportunity to hear it. And of course, we are very appreciative of Cordova Wireless Communications for sponsoring our show. So we have the opportunity to do this, to bring you information that either comes from or directly benefits Cordovans in some fashion. That's always the goal, anytime that we have a guest on. And Cordova Wireless is a great local partner, as I turn off the beeping, a great local partner and a heavy-duty supporter of Cordova's economy with all those millions of dollars that they bring in simply because they exist. We don't have to go cut anything down or extract anything or create anything. We just get to enjoy having all that money circulate around in town. And of course, all of us who are customers with them are making sure the money that we spend on telecommunications stays here. Big deal between both Cordova Wireless and CTC. So much appreciated. Thanks to you for listening. The rest of your 10 a.m. hour programming is on the way. Calendar, Classifieds, Fish Radio. And we will look forward to seeing you for the next town. And we will look forward to seeing you for the next town meeting talk show available on demand. Just give us an idea for a show and we're more than happy to do it. That's how this one happened. We'll see you for the next one on KLAM.